It is 6:30 in Reed Field, Maine. Please stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening to everyone who is at home, listening, watching, and everyone here in person to the August 29 Reed Field Select Board meeting. Just a reminder for everyone at home, please remain muted as you come in. And for the Select Board, as always, please make sure you speak into your microphones nice and loud and use your big voice. We're going to start with our first item. And it is, I will tell you in just a moment. It is 23-015, the Select Board minutes from July 18th, 20 and 26th, and August 3rd and 22nd. Anybody anything with minutes?
Make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the minutes as accepted. Is there any further discussion?
I can't vote on them for the 18th because I wasn't present.
Okay.
Would you like us to take them separately?
No.
Okay. Then, all in favor? Thank you very much, very much, and always thank you, Angelica. Yes, she is abstaining for absence, but thank you always. We move on to 22-016, warrants 3 through 8. I think we go to see Sean Keegan for this.
Yeah, so it seems like a lot because it's been a bit. So we'll start with warrants 3 and 4 together. So that was for the total of $43,944.24. The big things out of that were our payroll for $19,889. We paid our portion to the Cobassie watershed, $8,537.06, and to our tax assessor for the year for that bill for $1,500.
Excellent.
Do you want me to keep going or do you want to take? Yeah, that was a nod.
Yeah.
I'm going to keep going then. And then...
So that's 3 and 4.
I have a 3 and 4, and 5 and 6 for a sum of $403,709.46 with our first payment to the RSU of $309,458.75. With our payroll, $24,953. With our final payment to Black Bear for the softball baseball fundraiser, $497. We did make our payment essentially in technology for printer services for $3,230. And that will be going to RFP shortly also to, for those as we've been on a rolling contract there. Ben was trained, did a training to be for Sexton work for $3,200. And that is it. And then warrants 7 and 8, we had a lot of state fees in there. We had finished our Heritage Days fireworks, $3,500. The total for 7 and 8 is $83,198.72.
Excellent. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to go start with the earliest ones and do 3 and 4 first. So if I could have a motion to accept 3 and 4.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to accept warrants 3 and 4 in the amount of $43,944.24. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Next up, I would entertain a motion to accept warrants 5 and 6.
I'll make a motion to accept warrants 5 and 6 in the amount of $403,709.46.
It's been moved and seconded to accept warrants 5 and 6 for $403,709.46. Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much. And last, we come to warrants of 7 and 8.
I'll make a motion for warrant 7 and 8 in the total amount of $83,198.72.
It's been moved and seconded to accept warrant 7 and 8 for $83,198.72. Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much. And that is that. We move on now for 30 minutes for Select Board, for communications. We have 5 minutes set aside for Select Board communications. If any member of the Select Board would like to address the public, they may do so now. All right, hearing none. We move...
Oh, go ahead.
I was slow, sorry.
Oh, yeah, it's all right.
I'd like to thank you, Dennis, for doing the lion's share of the work for Heritage Days. I thought it went off well, and we had a lot of participation. And thank you for taking that on. Hopefully you get some help in the future.
Thank you very much. Yes, absolutely. I'll talk more about it later in the meeting. But thank you. Anything else? Excellent. We go now to 10 minutes for staff reports. We have the town manager report first, followed by the treasurer's report. Eric, take it away.
All right. So the town manager's report, it's been about 6 weeks since the last report.
Into the microphone.
Fortunately, August is a little bit of a slower month. And so I just have about a page here. With the administration and personnel, I want to report that the beach is no longer being staffed. But of course, people, we do hope that they paid it courteously and respectfully. Our maintenance staff will be checking in on the beach periodically to make sure that it's kept up over the next couple of months while we still have vegetation growing. And to just make sure that there's nothing happening that it shouldn't be. But I do want to thank Noah Ward Rubin and Seth Dunphy for their work this summer. We're still working on getting the programming up and going that we want, but I think they've really done a fantastic job of dialing in on the cleanliness of the beach, keeping the geese away. Our water quality tests this summer were phenomenal in large part because of their efforts and the working, work they did cleaning and keeping things going. So I just want to thank them for that and also for creating a friendly environment. We had some very positive feedback, especially for Seth, but also for Noah on how they interacted with the public. So that was very good to hear. I want to thank everyone who attended the summer residence meeting on August 5th and also the Harbor and Mourning Public Hearing on August 26th. Both of those were Friday evenings at 5:30. Not a great time to be getting out and going to a public meeting, but folks did. And it was really nice to hear people talk in a very open, civil, and productive manner. And that happened at both of those meetings. So that was very encouraging. The manager's institute was valuable as always. And I want to thank the Select Board for encouraging and supporting professional development for me and for all the staff. That's something that happens annually. And again, Ben went to Sexton Training. It's really important. And so thanks for supporting that. Moving on to roads, traffic, and safety and parking. Crack ceiling is complete for the year. We completed work on several roads, including Thunder Castle Chase, Old Kents Hill Road, and Lane Road. Ben, did I miss anything? Okay, all right, thanks. The RFP for Design and Private Services for Church Road Sidewalk has closed, and we will be reviewing that. We have 5 proposals, which is good. But we have a subcommittee of a member of the road committee, myself, and our deputy road commissioner, Matt Seams, will be looking at those in the next week or 2. Townwide striping on Church Road, excuse me, townwide striping and church road maintenance and paving RFPs are on the agenda for this evening. That works proceeding. And then RFPs will be issued in September for special paving projects at Reed Field Corner, Nickerson Hill, and P Ridge, as well as the Reed Field Library. We also will be issuing a townwide RFP for culverts. And we'll see where those lead. We move back to the transfer station. We have summer hours ending. They've already ended. They ended this Sunday. So we will not have Sunday hours again until the Sunday after Memorial Day. So we always run those hours unless something changes from the weekend after Memorial Day to the weekend before Labor Day. So again, very successful. A lot of people enjoy those. And they get to see Ben and Chris and Matt on a Sunday. So I want to thank them again for all of their efforts to keep things going. They really have kept the transfer station running on Sundays, on Saturdays during the week. Karen's been out for almost a month between having surgery and some personal issues. And it's just been phenomenal to have staff I know I can rely on that are there and keep things running. So I want to thank everybody for that. And then a final note, a special thank you to the town of Reed Field, the community, the people that are here tonight. Some of them, I think, for this purpose. The past several weeks have been very challenging for me and my family, my wife and my kids. And I want to thank everybody that has sent in statements of concern, stopped by the office, stopped me in my driveway and said, hey, I'm very sorry this is happening. I really appreciate all of that support. My wife does. From the heart, we really appreciate that. And it's phenomenal to be part of a community where that happens, even in the midst of some of the worst things I've ever dealt with professionally, with one individual person who just doesn't have any accountability to anyone, in my view. And I'm not going to get into adjectives, but it's really difficult what's happened. And I really appreciate the support of the community because we're not going anyplace and we're grateful to be here. So thank you for that. And that's my town manager's report.
Excellent. If there's... Oh, go ahead.
If I could have a question. So I believe a member of the town is looking for a forum to be heard with questions on the RFP for Church Road sidewalks. I know there was some mention of that occurring where people on both sides of the street should come or could be allowed to come and share their thoughts. And I believe this person sent everybody on the Select Board an email and asked them to respond that they read it. But it sounds like things are moving a bit forward with some proposals coming in, but the town people would like to be heard very early on in the process. So is there a time or spot or any thought to when that might happen?
Yeah, after we select a service provider, having professional consultation and support to manage these types of public processes, just like we did with the broadband and with the Fairgrounds project. Having those experts on hand makes that public engagement much more valuable and productive. And so the first step, the very first step, is to get through this process of selecting an engineer and a consultant to help us through this process, through the design process. And rest assured, one of the very first things we will be doing is working on organizing public outreach efforts that can happen to talk about this because I know both sides of the street really want to know what's going on. So, and folks in town as well, who are safety conscious, concerned about speed and bicycle and pedestrian safety. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, good call. Anything else? We'll move on to the treasurer's report. Eric, thank you.
All right. So I have 2 here. I'm going to move through them fairly quickly because one is just a summary of the end of year, which really gets fleshed out fully in the audit. And the next is the first month of this fiscal year, which really doesn't say a whole lot about what's happening because it's only 1 month's worth of data, although there are a few things worth noting. So I'll start with June of 2022 and say that check reconciliation was completed through the end of the month. Our accounts were in balance with our bank statements. All activity appeared normal. We did have 1 bounced check. Again, those are anomalies. It was in the check that someone wrote to the town, a town, the check, check the town wrote. And for the fiscal end of year note, I want to say that the close of the fiscal year went well. We are preparing for the audit for the FY '22 fiscal year. And the review of the end of year results are going to be presented further on in this report. And I'll just run right into those. The report covers the month of June. We have fewer journal entries than the same time last year. That's in large part due to the fact that we have fewer deposits from online transactions with less online registration as a result of the pandemic kind of winding down. Online activity has waned, so we have less of those. We also have seen that not just for the month of June, but for the whole year. Revenues and expenses should be at 100%. Receipts are up for both the month and for the year-to-date, and that's good. And they exceeded expectations budgetarily in large part because of motor vehicles and COVID-19 payments. So those 2 things really contributed to excess receipts. Revenues similarly are up for the year and for the month. Expenses are down for both the month and year-to-date. That's where we typically want to end the year. Revenues up, expenses down, at least relative to the budget. The maintenance department was over budget by 1.6%. It was just a few thousand dollars, and that's something that we will adjust and reconcile through the audit process. It may have been a purchase that should have gone into capital, or it might just be that we did a lot of maintenance work and we overspent, and we'll have to account for that someplace else. The other department that was showing significantly over was community services. But that was because of expenditures related to COVID-19 and broadband, that we did have revenue coming into offset unplanned revenue. And so those are wholly offset, and that department truly, from a financial net perspective, is not overdrawn, even though it shows on the financial documents. So for the year 2021, 2022, revenues received exceeded budget estimates and funds were expanded, were less than budgeted. So we're in a very good spot. Our checking account balance is higher than it's ever been. That's a good thing, but something we need to keep an eye on. So that's my summary for June and for the year of 2122. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Eric, for this. This is a great...
All right. And then I'll quickly do August.
Yes, go for it.
July, excuse me.
No, gotcha.
Steve, do you have a question?
No, I know.
Okay, all right. Yep, sorry. You threw me off.
No problem.
It's a mannerism. We're going to have to get used to it. All right. So let's see here. To cruise down through, I've got several pages of background.
It's on 18. If you are at home, you can get the packet online under the Select Board tab of reedfieldmain.org.
Okay, almost there. I'm getting through the summaries for the... Here we are. Okay. So August 29th, we're reporting on, in this case, July of 2022. New fiscal year, first month of the fiscal year. Board and members of the public will note that the numbers for the year-to-date and the month are the same. That's just how it works this time of year. Check reconciliation was completed through July 31st. Our accounts are in balance. No unusual activity was reported or observed. We have received engagement paperwork for the audit. So we're getting ready to start that next process, and I noted that in the last report. But we've got the paperwork in hand and excited again to work with RHR Smith and Company. They did a fantastic job, one of the best we've seen on an audit, and just really relieved and pleased to have them working for us again. With my comments, they're a little bit more brief, but I just want to say that the journals are fewer than last year in the month of July because of 2 factors. We did have repeat opening adjustments in July of 2021. We also had to recommit taxes in 2021 as a result of an issue with the Trio software. So we had some adjusting journals and all that business. And so we had 10 fewer journal entries than the prior month of the prior year. And I just wanted to point that out because it could look a little bit odd. Now that we're past the worst of COVID-19, we are seeing a bit of normalization in our financial numbers. Not so much volatility related to that. That's a good thing. But being the first month of the fiscal year, we do see that usual volatility in numbers being off by 50% or 150% comparatively, which is just normal for that first month of the year. Actual expenditures do appear to be up about 8%. That's about what we expected. Numbers for the RSU look quite dramatic because we did have a change last July. We had a payment that didn't go through until August. And so that made things look a little bit funky. So I just wanted to point that out. Those are all the anomalies that I saw. And other than that, it's a very normal month of July, and I'm happy to take any questions.
I have a comment. So the checking account being $440,000 higher than it was at this time last year is indicative of what you had explained from the year-end, correct?
Yes, and unexpendable grant funds, things like that that came through. And a few things of that nature, the money coming in from COVID. We still have a $135,000 there. So you add all those things up, and it puts us in a very comfortable position, but one where we have to start thinking carefully about how we're going to expend those funds to get back down to maybe a little bit more reasonable level of savings.
Thank you.
Anything else? Eric, thank you very much for your reports. We appreciate that. We move now to public comment. I'm just going to ask... Oh, sorry. Yep, sorry. Boards and committees, excuse me. We have minutes from the Age Friendly Committee, the Board of Appeals, Broadband Committee, the Cemetery Committee, the Comprehensive Plan Committee, the Library Board of Trustees, the Recreation Committee, Solid Waste and Recycling Committee, and Trails Committee. Anybody, thank you very much for all of those. It's nice to catch up. Go ahead.
Were we seeing those before as a snuggle to be? Is this what we would normally see pages and pages of the content?
Yes.
So we're not going to see that anymore?
It's online, yeah?
It's on each committee's page in the...
It is. And actually, I had intended to upload that 40-page plug to the website for the Select Board page, but I missed that. So I will, I'll put that up on the Select Board because what I like to do is not include them in the packet because that can be brutal. But I do want to make sure they're presented publicly and to the Select Board. So I will make sure those get up there tomorrow.
And are they individually, Eric?
They're individually, I believe, on the individual board and committee pages. They're included collectively in the Select Board pages for ease of navigation.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else about that? All right, now we move on to public communication. I know we have a full house. We have people online. If you are here to be a part of the public comment section of this meeting, can you please just raise your hand for me? Excellent. Excellent. I just want to make sure that we honor everyone as well as the agenda. And so what I thought I might do is give everyone at least 2 minutes because of being able to say your piece and hopefully be able to use that time. We're not going to come tackle you, so you don't have to worry. But we do want you to be respectful of everyone wanting to address us. Who is going to break the ice and be the first? Oh, yes, ma'am. Behind you, Bruce. I'm sorry. Excellent. And I'm just keeping a record of who is speaking, so I might be typing. Please think me not rude.
Hello, everyone. My name is Marty Sol. I live on the Winthrop Road in Reed Field. This is my first time missing the beginning of our Monday evening mindfulness meditation group on purpose. My teacher, Thich Nhat Hanh, shared that true wisdom is knowing when to employ the gentle compassion of understanding and when to employ the fierce compassion of good boundaries. This is one of those times when we Reedfieldians need to speak up. I want to express my deep appreciation for Eric Dyer as our town manager and as a community member. We as a community need to protect Eric and his family and help them be free from any harassment. We can all have different opinions and different points of view. However, no matter the issue or anyone's opinion of it, Reed Field should always be a safe, courteous, and respectful place for our public servants and their families who live here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Marty. We appreciate that.
Thank you, Marty.
Next, come on up and say your name and where you live.
My name is Bruce Bergwijn, and I live in the Fog Road. I think a lot of people here will not be taking 2 solid minutes. I just want to say I had a small hand in hiring Eric, and I have appreciated his work every single day as our town manager. When we hired him, we didn't hire him to come into an environment that was divisive and had difficult situations that were personal in nature, if you will. And to that end, I think Eric should not be enduring any harassment, and even more, certainly his family. I also really don't care what the issue might be. Harassment has no home in Reed Field, and we support you, Eric.
Thank you, Bruce. Next, go ahead, sir.
My name is Henry Widdamore. I live on Giles Road, just around the corner. I'm here to express, this will be very brief. I'm here to express support for our community of Reed Field, where we've lived now, my wife and I, for 32 years, and to voice my support and complete confidence in Eric Dyer as our town manager and in all of our municipal employees. Managing a small town is not easy. And in fact, it shouldn't be hard. It shouldn't be brutal. It should not be the source of divisiveness. Thank you, Eric, and thank you to the Select Board for all the work you do to uphold our community and the community spirit that is Reed Field. And let's keep that going strong and keep it going strong forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Hannah.
Thanks, Henry.
Go ahead, sir.
Whoever gets there first, it's okay.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Ed Sims. My wife and I have lived on Old Kents Hill Road for the past 30 odd years. Mostly not odd, but good time. And I'll speak to a little larger issue. It's not, it means more to me than what we're talking about as far as a manager of our town or a resident with a land usage issue. It's just being basically respectful and kind. And we seem to have lost our way, and that's a sorry predicament. And I've had the honor of being on the Budget Committee Board with Eric for the past 2 years. And I've had a minority opinion more than once and disagreements more than a couple of times. But I've never felt that I've been unheard or dismissed. I appreciate his guidance and his service to the community, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Ed.
Thanks, sir.
Next. Yes, sir. Say your name, where you live.
Go do. I'm Harry Grimnitz, and I've lived on Winthrop Road for more than 28 years. During that time, I've been in Reed Field. We've had several town managers. And we have always been blessed with incredibly capable and sound town management. And Eric is no exception. He has done a marvelous job since first arriving here. And I've known him since he first came on as town manager. And I've gotten to work with him on several town projects. And Eric is an excellent neighbor. He gets down and shoulders his load and works right along with his neighbors to improve our community. I greatly sorrowed by recent events that have put him and his family, his wife and his young children, into the situation of having to endure intimidation and harassment from another resident of town. I am sorry that is happening, and I extend my heartfelt support and sympathy to you, Eric, and to your family. And I'm hopeful that we will soon see an end of this sort of behavior in Reed Field and can come back together to work as a community as we always have. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm Bob Marveney. I live at Broadview Heights Drive, and I've lived in Reed Field for 35 years. And I also offer my support for our town manager. In all my dealings with Eric, he's always been courteous, very helpful, and above all, a very professional in all his dealings. And I think we all need to treat him and all town employees and everyone with respect, even if we don't have to share the same opinions. So thank you very much, Eric, for all you do.
Thank you, Mr. Bo. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Greg Durigan, and I live, I'm 41 since we're touting years. I've been there 46 years. I've enjoyed several other town managers, all above board. I want to thank the Select Board, and I want to especially thank Eric for all... I want to thank the Select Board, and I want to especially thank Eric for all his service and support for him. I've been at this podium several times and not always agreed with Select Board decisions or Eric's decisions, but we've always treated each other with respect, and I would expect that of all our citizens, no matter what their opinions are. So Eric, thank you. I don't want to use above a plating line, but I feel your pain. Your family doesn't deserve this. You don't deserve this. The town doesn't deserve it. So good luck and keep going.
Thank you. I thought I'd take a moment. I have received some information over the email that I would like to be read into the official record. And this is from John Tyler, who is a town resident. "I've lived in Reedfield since the mid-1950s and have seen many controversial issues. We have a beach elementary school additions to which road should be improved. We, townspeople, have always worked for a fair solution after thinking through the problem. There will always be different opinions and questions, but harassment and divisiveness never has never been a part of the solution. I support Eric, the Select Board, and the town committees that make Reedfield a special place, and my family have grown up and was educated in me at Kent Hill and my children at MCS. Respectfully submitted, John Tyler." Also, I would read this one as well. Excuse me, I'm sorry, that's the wrong one. Right, here we go. This is from, this is from Grace Keane. This was emailed to us. "I have lived in Reedfield since 1970, and I would like to express my appreciation for Eric Dyer as our town manager and a community member. I believe Eric and his family should be free from any harassment. Reedfield should always be a safe, courteous, and respectful town for our employees and their families." And the last I will read is from Zoom, a Zoom chat from Marty and Elaine Hannish, or Marty Hannish and Elaine Kate. "Elaine and I want to express our appreciation for the fine work which Eric has provided to the town. We also want to express our dismay at the treatment he was received from a residence with a perceived grievance. Everyone should understand that the town manager does not set town policy. He implements policy set by the Select Board and the Planning Board." So those are our digital submissions. If anybody else in attendance would like to step to the podium, we'll give you a time. Thank you, sir. Just say your name, where you live.
My name is Isaiah Steven. I live on Old Kent Hill Road. I also would like to send my support to Eric, town manager. I've gotten to know him over the last few years personally as his neighbor. I've also seen him in his professional duties as town manager. He does not deserve, nor did any employee deserve to be treated the way he has been treated, and I hope the town continues to support him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Bob.
My name is Bob Harris. I've lived, well, I've been in Reedfield for a long time, and Eric, I'm kind of ashamed of what's been going on, and I think it's terrible. I think the people in this town, they should rally around you. You're a fine, decent man. You're honest and hardworking. And I don't think you deserve anything about like what's happening. It's a hard job you have. All you folks, it's a hard job. Nobody agrees with everything you do, but just because you don't agree with someone, you can't go after them, and I think it's terrible, and I'm on your side 100%, and Jean and I, I think you've done a great job.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else? Go ahead, Ralph.
You're not wrong, Ralph.
I can hold it by the minute. Thanks to you, buddy. Ralph, you know, 52 Mountain View Lane, I don't know how long I've lived here, but it's nowhere near what you guys. I'm here as well to support Eric. It's unfortunate what he has had to go through and what his family has been exposed to. There are venues for public discourse, and in those venues, everything should be civil and polite, and for the most part during my experience as a town official, they have been. However, because outcomes haven't been as desirous as some folks would like them to be, they've crossed the line and invaded personal space for a public employee. And by extension, I'm saying this not only for you, but for all town employees, elected and appointed officials. This should simply not happen. It not only diminishes the individuals that engage in this, to my mind, reprehensible behavior, it diminishes our town. I frankly was more than just a little bit upset to see that we made the KJ, and it wasn't in a good way. So I think we need to get back on track. I know about 10 years or so ago, we were wrestling with the same devil, and I thought we had it beaten down, but apparently eternal vigilance is required for as long as we're on the right side of the grass. So I think we need to stand up as a community, and this is gratifying to see the level of support. I hope it continues because we're going to need people who need to, who need to serve and carry on Reedfield's tradition of strong, local participatory governance. Gets very hard to get people to do that if they encounter this kind of foolishness on an ongoing basis. So Eric, again, my heartfelt sympathies, and thank you to the Select Board for standing up for him, and you should know, as is evidenced by what is going on here tonight and at the grassroots level, that this is not going to be tolerated, and we will push back.
Thank you, Ralph.
Thank you, Ralph.
Anyone else? Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Hello, my name is Ben Rodriguez. I live just down the road on Old Kent Hill Road, and I just want to say how grateful I am to have Eric in town, both as a town manager and as a resident. I've been able to work alongside him for going on four years now and have been very appreciative of him being willing to hear us out when there are things that we see that need to be changed and support that needs to be had, and I have had nothing but positive experiences, and as I mentioned, I've been grateful to work with him both as a town manager and through my capacity with Meeting House, seeing him out at events and stuff like that. It's just nice to see someone that both wants to engage in a hard-working manner, both to support the community through his role working for the town as well as a resident, just building community, being a part, and just helping, you know, make a community whole and one that we all feel proud to belong to. So once again, I'm grateful to have you. I support you, and thank you. Take you all.
Thanks so much, Ben.
Excellent. Thank you, Dan. Go right ahead. Thank you, Chris.
I'm Chris Sammons. I'm on P. Rich Road, and I, as Bruce, had the good fortune to be involved in the hiring of Eric and had worked with him for six years. So I really hate to see he and his family going through what they're going through now because Reedfield is better than this. Eric and his family should be able to live their lives and not be harassed. No public servant should be harassed. No citizen should be harassed. So I'm standing behind Eric, and we're very lucky to have Eric and his family. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Oh, there it is. Oh, good time. Don't forget to take your mitts. Stop the meeting. We'll get some coffee. You take the pills. Is there anyone else that would like to address the meeting? Is there anyone online? This would be your opportunity. Go ahead, Bruce. Yes, I think we are. You may, this is take two here.
Yeah, I asked the chair to indulge me to speak on a different issue, and I would just say, first of all, your public comments tonight really are what should focus everybody. I just wanted to give you some information about broadband. And I'll just read this through really quickly. It's about a three-minute read and enter into the record, if you will, this information. On June 14, Reedfield ballot question 10 on broadband was defeated 519 to 307. After the election, I noticed these articles. Main Public Radio and Television, July 7, 2022, "A group funded by Main's largest internet service provider has successfully helped defeat municipal broadband projects in a tiny communities of Reedfield and Southport. While mailers and locally targeted digital ads by Alliance for Quality Broadband may have helped convince Southport and Reedfield residents to ditch their municipal broadband proposals, a full accounting of its electioneering activities and funding sources is not possible because the vast majority of Main towns do not require campaign finance reports by groups influencing local referendums." Bangor Daily News, June 28, 2022, "One of the members of the Alliance's national group, Spectrum Parent Company Charter Communications, who has been active in lobbying against these projects. The tactics have already paid off in other referendums. A spin-off Facebook page led by the Alliance called Protect Reedfield spent nearly $14,000 on ads from March 27 to June 24, according to site disclosures. Voters there ultimately defeated a town-owned broadband network on June 14." These ads were placed by Protect Reedfield, and a disclaimer said the Alliance for Quality Broadband paid for the ad. I saw the ad on Instagram myself very late in the election season, and after subsequently in reading those pieces from the Bangor Daily News and Main Public, I researched Meta Ads, the owner of Facebook and Instagram, because there was no known group in town operating with these names, nor were the models in the ads townspeople I recognized whatsoever. They spent $13,777 for ad, for seven ad versions, over 28 launches, to buy 500,000 to 600,000 impressions on Facebook and Instagram. An impression is a very small measurement that derivatively, you hope a small portion of those influence people. The Alliance for Quality Broadband has 30 partners, of which Charter Communications is quote-unquote "the money." In state, there are state partners in the Maine Policy Institute, the Maine Chamber of Commerce. Maine Chamber of Commerce, by the way, denied that they knew that this electioneering was going on. There are 27 other partners. They're all out of state. There's no prohibition on reporting this kind of spending in small towns unless we either opt into a law to do so. We would have to research that or perhaps by ordinance. State law needs to be tightened on this for transparency's sake and, I think, sheer honesty. I've talked with individuals and organizations like Grow Smart Maine, who are interested in seeing a bill being introduced to address this. My hope, and I hope others would agree that the Select Board ought to look into what the town can do independently to get spending transparency, reporting on article questions, spending $15,000 or so on one question is just over the top in my, my thinking, and that you would use your membership in MMA to request and build support for a bill submitted on this concern, because other towns will have it as well. It doesn't really matter how you voted on broadband or whether it would have won or lost under different circumstances, in my opinion. The very fact that our Reedfield vote was influenced from away by a national company with a financial stake in the outcome, and that it did so with zero requirement to be transparent, and they were purposely manipulative about it, should concern us all. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce, and thank you, everyone. I just want to say thank you for your comments and succinct delivery thereof. If there is nothing else, then we move to Old Business, 22119, which is to discuss the recent Heritage Day celebration. Please feel free, yes, I'm sure it's going to be a very interesting meeting. The red, you'll be in South. The hors d'oeuvres come out later.
Thank you all for coming.
I just want to say that the Heritage Days this year was absolutely just such, for me, I was able to leave halfway through the day, the eve, the afternoon, to go do a wedding to marry someone. And there was no, it didn't feel like there was a fire to put out or anything like that. In fact, I felt like some ideas that we, you know, every year, when I do events like this, I try to think about ways that we can always improve over the last previous year. This year, one of the things that we did was have parking at the beach, and I felt like that really worked. It worked for the makers. There were a lot of groups down there selling and advertising church groups, local groups, parent-teacher organizations. So I felt like that was a success. We had an open house. It seemed like that, and Carol, if you want to talk a little bit about how your open house went, I just felt like it was a great addition. There were people dying to get inside of that house because they've been watching you work on it for so long, and I think that was a great way of doing that. Is there anything you'd add to that?
Oh, no, we just, in 1996, had an open house because people kept stopping, saying, "Do you guys buy this? Are you doing something with it?" And we're like, "Everybody come in and just have a look." So in 1996, we opened our doors, and this is the first time since then. And I think we, somebody was taking a tally upstairs, and they said about 200 had come through the second floor, and just a lot of really good comments and the support we've had through the years has been phenomenal. We thank you all.
Absolutely. I know that Bob just left, but we know that the Historical Society Wine and Cheese was great. We went over there for a little while, and it's just such a cool part of Reedfield history that's right there inside of that building, so that was also a pretty great way to get us started and things like that. I wrote a thing, so I'm going to read it. We saw, I would like to thank everyone that had a part in this year's Reedfield Heritage Days. "We saw an incredible number of people visiting Reedfield to visit new businesses, buy books, tour art galleries, play kickball, see makers, and visit one of our greatest assets, the Reedfield Beach." Heritage Days is a celebration of our town, and when it is when we come together and take pride in where we live. We celebrate our rural culture and our agricultural roots, and we celebrate generations of the future that will keep Reedfield exciting and a great place to live. Anything that detracts from that celebration of our town is in direct conflict with the very purpose of the day, and we don't want any citizen of Reedfield feeling like they cannot enjoy Heritage Days because of activities or events that may be a part of that day. It is a celebration. Reedfield should be celebrated, but in a way that builds unity. To that end, in the packet, if you look on page, I'm getting there, I promise. There we go. It's on page 67, and this is something that I talked with Eric about, and I think it's a simple thing that we can still celebrate all of the various ways that Reedfield has agricultural roots and that rural heritage, but do it in a way that I think brings more unity to everything. So we came up with this Select Board resolution, which says the following. Now, I'd like to, at the, at the pleasure of the board, I'd like to take item 23018 out of order because it seemed like a natural progression and sort of do this. Yeah, it's 67 in your packet, and this is a Select Board resolution. "Whereas, the town of Reedfield holds an annual Heritage Day celebration, and this year's activities included a pig scramble. Whereas, the town of Reedfield supports local agriculture and local food production, and volunteers organizing the event wish to promote this through the event, commonly and legally held at agricultural fairs. And whereas, a number of Reedfield residents and non-residents express their concern at the message being sent to children by the event and the perceived treatment of the animals, and whereas, the Select Board wishes to maintain Heritage Days as an event that can be enjoyed by all Reedfield residents and visitors. And whereas, the number, there are numerous activities that celebrate our agricultural heritage and promote local agriculture and local food production without the use of live animals or which are not perceived to harm the animals. And finally, whereas, Heritage Days is organized by volunteers, and we encourage those wishing to see more or different activities to actively participate in event planning." That, that's a personal extension. "Now, therefore, the Reedfield Select Board resolves to not include pig scrambles in future Heritage Days events and to encourage alternative activities that promote local agricultural and local food production." This is something that I feel like is an easy thing to do. I want to say, first of all, it's great that he's here, but Isaiah did a great job, I felt like, with, with planning something that we hadn't done before. And I also want to say, you know, it means a lot to me that we do have this be joyful. I don't want any, you know, even if it's a perceived discord, it goes against what Heritage Days is. And so that's why we thought we would have this Select Board resolution and sort of introduce that tonight. And so that's why we thought we would have this Select Board Resolution and sort of introduce that tonight as an official Select Board position. So if you have any questions on that? Comments, yeah. Carol, go ahead. First, yeah.
We really need a resolution. I mean, we tried something, maybe there was a second thought. This seems. I don't know.
It just, really what it does is it just, it just makes sure that we understand that this, we, all of the things that I felt like were in conflict in Heritage Days, I feel like we can put it to rest with this resolution. That's what I believe, and I think it's official, and I think it comes with respect. Um, I, yes, absolutely. Go ahead, Isaiah. You can run up, yeah, run up there, run up there to the thing, say your name and where you live.
And, what's it? Steven, Old Tensville Road, Reed Field. I did, I did organize the big scramble. I did not ask to have the pig scramble at Heritage Days, but I did organize it, the big scramble. I've been trying to get my kids into pig scramble for five years. And the big difference in this big scramble compared to other ones was everybody got in. Most pig scrambles, you have a, you pick a name out of a hat, and lots of disappointed kids sitting on the sidelines don't get in year after year after year. It is a sanctioned event by, by the state. I don't disagree with the sentiment of your resolution. I do disagree with the, the potential for other events of like kind. For example, the fishing derby comes into, into mind. So, you know, if it's an event that the, the, the town enjoys, and again, I have no personal stake in future pig scrambles. I think they're a fun event. I know personally that the pigs are not harmed, which is why they have, you know, an oodle of rules surrounding these things. If you've ever caught a pig scramble, they incredibly strong, and, and I know that none of those particular pigs were, were harmed. So whether that event continues in the future, I think singling out that particular event because some people did not like that event, I think is a slippery slope. I think that whether the Heritage Days chooses to have a, a big scramble in the future or not is, is a, a choice. But to have a resolution that, that says never again, I think is a little bit too much. Because again, you know, it's a small group of people, have one opinion. It was well-attended, I think. I, I may be biased, but it might have been the highlight of the event.
Absolutely. Thank you, Isaiah. I appreciate that.
Are you just having it one day? Don't you days anymore?
No, it's on Friday and Saturday.
It was on Fridays.
It started with the wine and cheese. The only event in recent years on Fridays has been the Reed Field Historical, holding their annual social get-together called the Wine and Cheese Social.
Um.
I guess, responding to Carol, I see this as trying to be preemptive so that the group of people who were in opposition and were actually picketing at the event would know in advance that they won't need to do that next year if we pass this resolution because we have, are officially stating that we won't have it. I'm not saying I agree with this, but I think that's the motivation behind this. Would that be correct?
I, I absolutely agree with that. I, I think it just, you know, it's an easy choice. There are other, there are other things that we could do. It's not about, you know, that, in terms of, you know, the choice. And like I said, it just, it's an official stance. You know, this, that, there could certainly be other, there could be a resolution that, that if people want to do that, they certainly can. But I think, you know, just having a position that says, we understand, and this is what we're doing in the future, is important to me.
So I do understand that, like, my wife and I had that discussion ahead of time, but I appreciate Isaiah's point of view and the way he explained it was really good. I particularly liked your choice of words with the slippery slope analogy. That was really appropriate for the big scramble, I thought. You know, slippery pigs, slippery slope.
Yeah, you can't grease them. Yeah, that's a whole different, that's a whole different thing.
But I, I do, I, I'm still mixed about whether or not we need to consider an official resolution.
I have no problem with us having a resolution that says that we realize that there were conflicting opinions about this and that there are remaining conflicting opinions about whether this is appropriate. I'm not sure that I am willing to say that we won't have it anymore. I don't mind recognizing people and letting them know that we heard them. But I, I kind of like the idea of just leaving it open. We can say publicly that we don't plan on having them again, but if we put it in writing that, you know, this is it. I, I understand the slippery slope thing, and just because one or two people, or maybe a small group of people, more than one or two, have an opinion, doesn't mean that that affects everybody. It's what we were talking about earlier this evening, that sometimes we have to agree to disagree. And then we honor the group at large opinion.
Carol, go ahead.
I just think if, you know, we tried something, put a trial balloon up there. I think if we would do it again, other people might, or the same people might show up. But I think just because somebody came out and had their free speech, and we have to like defend that we're not going to ever do that again, is just going a little bit too far with something that was just a trial to see if it was something people would enjoy or participate in. And I think it's just probably not necessary. The, the fact that maybe we won't do it again is probably all that needs to be put out there.
Shall we?
Yeah, I guess I'm, you know, I, I get both sides. I mean, my sister's pretty avid vegan and probably would be on the same side as whoever was at the, the event. And, but I also am a farmer, so, you know, I have different thoughts. And I think back to last year where we had the stone pulling. Some people might also believe that that could be an abusive thing towards an animal and different such. So I think, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable with, with it. Either way, I mean, I think it's fine to support those individuals in our town that may not appreciate it, and probably likely so. Heritage Days has evolved and changed every year, so, okay, we just don't do one again. And whether it's a resolution or not, doesn't really bother me.
Then i, i, if we, if there's no motion to sort of accept the resolution, then we will just move on. With the idea that, that as long as I'm involved in Heritage Days, I, I can gladly say that I don't want to do that again.
I would be happy with changing it so the last whereas is the now therefore, and just eliminating the last section. Now, therefore, Reed Field Heritage Days is organized by volunteers, and we encouraging those wishing to see more different activities to actively participate in event planning.
And they stopped there.
And we stopped there. That's the end. So we're, we're.
That's a great idea. I think that's honoring the people and that we're supportive of. Well, I think Heritage Days in general, right, that we want Heritage Days to be a welcoming event for people and that the more that people can come and help us plan these things. I mean, there's always going to be someone that remembers there was a problem with the period, the pig scramble, right? So even if it's not you, Dennis, I believe that there's somebody around that's going to be involved with that planning as it continues to grow, where hopefully those sort of messages continue without it stating.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to amend the Select Board Resolution as presented, striking the, the last section and making the section above that the now therefore.
Excellent. So the resolution will say, now therefore Heritage Days is organized by volunteers, and we encourage those wishing to see more or different activities to actively participate in event planning.
Yes.
And we'll keep everything else.
I second that.
We moved it seconded to accept the Select Board Resolution for Heritage Days as presented, excuse me, as amended. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Just not that I oppose, but I don't think it's necessary.
I got you. Thank you. The motion still passes. Thank you very much. We move now back to item twenty-three, zero, zero, nine. Discuss harbor and mooring considerations in the town of Reed Field. Eric, do you want to take this about our meeting?
Sure. And just a, a, a quick comment on that resolution. I will have that amended and available at the office for you folks to sign. When, when, if you choose to. And I also want to say that the comments at the start of the meeting, I'm truly humbled. I don't accept compliments well, and this is even harder. So I just, I'm, I'm truly humbled, and we, my wife, my family were truly grateful. So thank you, everybody. So we had, as I noted, a fantastic public hearing. It was an hour and a half, and it didn't even feel like it. Last Friday evening, Catherine and Dennis were both there. We had some just really fantastic discussion around the, the, the issue broadly of harbor and mooring management. I won't use the word regulation, but it, it's, it's in there in the background someplace. About what the issues were, some people are thinking very locally. Some people are looking more broadly and saying we need to do something across all of the lakes for equity, but also just to, if we're truly trying to be preemptive and think about our lakes as a, as the wonderful gems they are and the resource that they are, environmental resource, natural resource. And, and, and also, I mean, I don't want to dismiss this, a financial resource for the town, a lot of the tax base is right there on the shore. So there was some just excellent discussion about the many ways that our lakes are being impacted by, by growth and development, by boating, and by active boating, by, by passive use like mooring and anchorage. And I thought that we had some just really good ideas put out there. I felt that we had some very broad-based, again, broad-based discussion. And that I, I feel that there, there is enough here for us to move forward on actively to try to think about. And the board has done a great job already of setting that course. Think about how we can manage our lakes to allow for use, to protect the rights of private property owners, to still encourage and allow access by those who might be coming from other parts of town or even other parts of the state or out of, out of state perhaps, to have access to the shore, end of the water. And so it, it was a great next step. And the board, let the last meeting had identified this as one of those key pieces that, that opened public discussion. And I think the next thing that's coming up is more of a focused discussion with some of the lake associations and watershed districts. And we had some great advice from Wendy Dennis of the Cubby Sea, Cubby Sea Watershed District, identifying the, the, the value for conservation, not just the, the law enforcement piece of, of trying to keep people from boating while drunk, although that's important and seemingly more so. But all those issues need to be addressed and getting some focused discussion from those lake associations and watershed districts, I think is the next step. I hope the board continues on with this path, and I'm, I'm eager to, to look, at least personally, at a lighter touch kind of ordinance that maybe looks at how to protect waterfrontage in front of our many private residences on the shore. How to maybe establish a mooring field someplace on Miranda Cook that can be used and managed in a way that sets some limits and also allows for access by folks that don't have waterfront, which is really important. And I think there's a real possibility here for at least consideration of, of future role of a harbor master to help with the conservation side of things as much, if not more so, than any kind of, of mooring regulation. I, I've been down that road before. I used to work in a coastal, two coastal municipalities with hundreds of moorings. And I don't want to be in the business of collecting fees just to regulate moorings. That's, that's not something that I think is viable or, or, or wise for the town of Reed Field. But, but there's pieces of this that, that makes sense. And, you know, I've seen what's happened in, in southern Maine with some of the lakes down there. And those places are struggling with the same things we are, but they've got a, a higher level of issue. Right now, we're on the very front end of what could be some pretty impactful behavior and impactful, you know, use of the lake. So I think there's value in this, and I think the Select Board's on the right track with the direction you set. And again, it was fantastic discussion. I'm really, really pleased with it.
I, I would say, I, I was at that meeting, Kat was at that meeting, and one of the things that I felt like there were two, there were two things that sort of the, the discussion would, could be classified as. One is about moorings, and one is about responsible boating. And it seems like, you know, that, that, that's, those are two separate items, but they are often, in that meeting, I felt like spoken about as one. There were a lot of people that, that, you know, that, you know, the harbor master isn't going to keep people from speeding in a no-way zone. That's, that's, if you, if that's the sort of thing, like a game ward is, is a part of that, you know what I mean? But, but what we noticed is that, you know, in those discussions, we had people who were looking for more responsible use of the lakes. And that sort of trickled down to the responsible moorings. So I, I agree. I, I, I think that, that overall, it was a great discussion. People were very civil, they understood, they knew what was happening, and it, and it felt really constructive. It was a good municipal meeting to be a part of. If there's nothing else, shall we move it forward?
Well, there's something else. So in reading in what was in our packet tonight, it seemed that the proposal, which I assume was required.
Nope. That was, that was. So, so there were two things in there that, one was the, the, the research piece that came from residents of Tucson Point. I don't agree with everything in there. I, I think a lot of it's, you know, good and helpful, but it's just background. And it did come from a, a group with a vested interest, which is, which is fine. I think it was done by some legal students perhaps, or somebody that had some experience with this. The other piece was the draft ordinance from Augusta. That seems to be the closest thing I've seen to acceptable, but even that, I think, is a bit more than what I'd be interested in. But those are the two things that were.
Okay, because that, that was leading me in a direction that was very uncomfortable. So I have several comments, and I will be briefer than I was the other night. But, um, so we had said that we would discuss this at our retreat. Is that still the plan?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Is this really something where the Select Board is going to give direction to the planning board to pursue this? This isn't really a Select Board issue. Wouldn't that be correct? If it's an ordinance and it's, I know it's not land use, it's water use, but I think that, where does it fall?
Unfortunately, I think it'd fall in my lap unless someone on the board wanted, unless someone on the board wanted to take it on as a, I don't see it as a planning board issue. It's not land use. It's, it's very much separate. They might be able to offer a little bit of insight into the mechanics of how an ordinance like that could work. But it really would be a, a, a Select Board Town Manager or a consultant type of situation, but I'll, I'll stop there.
There's a lot of expense involved in this, and I spoke earlier to it, and I'll speak every time about this aspect of it. We have to be very careful, and we always have been in the last twenty-ish years that I've been around in town government in Reed Field, that we don't make rules that we can enforce. And the, the one that comes easiest to mind that is, most people can identify with is fireworks. When the state started allowing fireworks, lots of towns wanted to have a local fireworks ordinance because we didn't want fireworks in our town. But there's no one to enforce that, especially on the nights when people are the most bothered by fireworks because that's when the police are the busiest on those holiday evenings. And they have said that they can't respond to those things. They don't have the manpower, person power to respond to the things they already are tasked with doing. So we don't have a fireworks ordinance, even though there were some people who really wanted one. So I am always thinking ahead to what's responsible. If we make a law, we have to be able to stand up and uphold it. And I, I just don't see how that's going to be possible, even if we did a multi-town regional effort to do this. Not saying that I'm throwing a monkey wrench in the hole works, but to me, it's always very important to, to come at it from that standpoint. And a lot of what we heard, and I won't be specific about any particular comment that was made, but there were two points really being made at the meeting we had, which was we're worried about what's happening in Winthrop and that it could come here. It's not a problem right now, but it could be, so let's be preemptive. And I can see value in doing something preemptively, but I can also say, well, if it's not broke, why are we trying to fix it? So I think there are two sides to that. And then the other piece is that, well, we don't like the way it looks in our front yard. Well, I don't like the way something looks in my backyard. Well, I don't like the way something looks in my backyard, but if it belongs in someone else's property and they want to plant a tree that blocks my view, I don't have a right to make them take their tree down. And I'm not sure that people have a right to tell people they can't have their boat on state waters because it's out in front of their property. I think we have to be very careful to be kind, as we talked about earlier, in the way that we're dealing with other people. So that whatever we do going forward, I don't want to just listen to the loudest voice. I want to make sure that we do this thoughtfully for a town of Reedfield. Naples was used as an example. Well, Naples has 1,500 moorings, I think they said. And they have lots of very wealthy people who have boats and boat storages and marinas and hotels and restaurants and a water park. And that's not Reedfield.
Two ice cream stores.
The two.
At least, maybe three.
And so if we're going to, you know, even Augusta, Augusta's the state capital. It's a larger city. It's primarily, it's not residential anymore really. It's, it's primary function is business. We need to model this on something that makes sense for Reedfield. We're a small town with very little business. We're all people who live here and, and the boat launch gets a lot of activity. We have a lot of people who come in and out and I don't want to discourage people from coming to Reedfield and enjoying the lake.
Is that your short version?
Yeah.
Okay, please go. Oh yeah. If you want, please go to the podium, say where you live.
Chris Sammons, P Ridge. I do have a boat moored on the boat landing. I didn't have a slip in Winthrop and I paid $10 a day. And when I came in to park my boat, if somebody was there, the police would not move that boat out of my slip. I could not park my boat the place I rented. So they had no control over that boat sitting in the water. They would not move it because it's in the water. So you've had to be careful what you can promise people. Because I had to find another place to park my boat, even though I paid $10 a day for that slip.
We were told only the game wardens can do anything on water. No state police, no sheriff, no harbor master. It's only game warden.
The harbor master can, but they have to have an ordinance supporting their actions.
Okay.
So it's, it's a big, big, what are you going to tell people? Well, we can't enforce it because I was ripped when I came back and somebody was in my slip and I had to find another place to park my boat.
Thank you, Chris. All right, go ahead, Carol.
Did I say we're moving something forward? I don't know where we are with, I followed it like this much. It's, did you say we're moving forward with something? I don't know what it is if we are.
No, I said that I thought it seemed like it was, that what was in the packet was moving us forward. And all we have done thus far is, that was written by people from the summer group who was asking us to do something.
Right, so it's just background information.
Yeah, it's all background. We have not done anything. We are committing to exploring this issue at the select board retreat.
And what exactly, I haven't heard it in a nutshell yet. What did, is Winthrop doing or have done or are going to do that's putting, you know, getting everybody upset? Or do we even want to take time for that now?
That's a lot in the agenda. That's okay. We don't have all the time for it, but I will say this, one of the biggest things for the Reed, for the, the Winthrop ordinance that I think is really coming back at them is the fact that you deeded access, deeded access lands, you can't moor a boat.
Unless you have access in your deed, you can't.
You have to be a lake shore owner of property to moor your boat. If you have deeded access down the road and I go over to Bruce's house, right, my road's right next to, you can't do that. So there's, there's, what we're doing is we're letting Winthrop make all of the choices that we, we can observe and then make all the good ones.
Because I, I see that, like, we're not a Guckwood or Naples who have
Nope.
very commercial endeavors on the water, but we do share a lake with that town. And if anything's going to impact us, it's probably more that than anything. So I'm glad we have our eye on it and watching what they're doing and learn from it.
You gotta go to the podium, Ms. Sammons, as you well know.
You know what, our meeting's going to run long anyway, so go for it.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
The other thing I wanted to mention is that expensive dam that we built
Yeah.
was paid for by the citizens of Refills.
And Winthrop.
And Winthrop, but we paid 51%. They paid 49%.
Yeah.
So every citizen, and that had to be voted on, on the warrant. They had, we had to agree to do that. So they don't want to cut their nose off, spite their face.
I like that. It's in the record now.
And any ordinance that we come up with, and I was very quick to point it out, will be a ordinance on the town warrant. It will be voted on by the residents of Reedfield, which I know a lot of these people who live on the lake are not residents, they're property owners. And so it's nice to consider them, but it will be the residents of Reedfield who vote on an ordinance.
So I would say that, that item 2309, the harbor and mooring considerations, we are going to take that as a select board to the retreat. I think it is important to think about, talk about, but again, we will see what happens. If there's nothing else, we move to 23010, consider a second reading of the public ways, traffic and parking ordinance. We have 10 minutes allotted for this. Eric?
All right, thanks. So this is the, the second reading for the, the select board. In between the first reading and the second reading, we had a, a, a good discussion in a few exchanges via email with the road committee about the, the proposed changes. This really is just an update, a clarification, adding a little bit more control over things like parking spaces, but where there really wasn't any before. And the, the biggest change is the inclusion of a section for road openings. So if somebody wants to cut into our town way, there's a process by which they can do that. And there's some accountability there if there's any damage to the, to the, to the, to the road. A few functional changes, making things more intelligent, allowing for a slightly smaller culvert size, really little, little things here and there that just make this a better, a better ordinance.
When was the last time this ordinance was updated?
Boy, it would have been 2019, I think. And that was the first time we actually put it together. It was a consolidation of several.
Okay, I remember that.
Spread out.
Yes, there were lots of them and then we consolidated. So this is just continuing one of our prior goals of just sort of, for the lack of better words, trimming the, the, the excess stuff away and sort of getting back to pure concentrated ordinance.
And so we do have Doug Riley here from the road committee. Thank you, Doug, for coming up.
Thank you, Doug.
And I mean, either one of us can answer any questions on this, but the road committee was, was quite pleased with this. I think they, they did talk me out of fiddling with the, the penalties. And I said, that's something the select board can do. If they want, if they want to change it, they can. But Doug, if you want to say.
I don't want him to have put on a nice shirt and not get a chance to address us. So come on up here, Doug. Good to see you, former neighbor.
I have one question that you might address, Doug, which is on the, and it's not that I'm opposed to this, but it's on section, in the opening section. Oh, Catherine, where is it? It's about the two-year part. I just found it. In any case, it says, shall not be permitted within two years of repaving.
Okay, which, which page are you on, Catherine?
It's on page nine and it's 14. So it's under A.
It's the road opening section.
Yeah, the road opening, section A1.
Page 54.
And my only, my only concern there is that it says, shall not be issued for public ways paved within the past two years. And I can just foresee there being an exception for some incredibly necessary reason and someone who didn't live here when the road was just recently paved and now they need to open the road would not be allowed because it says shall not. And so I just wonder if that's a necessary language or is there something else that can be there?
Okay, yes, I'm Doug Riley from Mesa's Cottage Road in the depot and secretary for the road committee. Incidentally, the initiative for this ordinance revision, I believe, started with, with your board and the road committee was very pleased to be asked to provide comments. And so we've done that. The particular one you're asking right now, Catherine, I have to, something in my mind is saying that there are provisions for the road commissioner to make exception, make exception, make exception here and there. And I think that may fall into one of those exceptions. However, I'm not going to promise that unless I can find it.
Yeah, I'm looking for it, Doug. Yeah.
And I can't do it in two minutes.
That's fine.
Well, it does say in that ordinance, outside of emergency repair work. So there's some provision for the road commissioner's discretion.
It seems that way.
As long as there is a way, I mean, I, I know the reason for this is so that people just don't arbitrarily dig up a road that was just reconstructed and repaved and is nice and smooth and now you've got a, a dip in it. And then 200 feet down the road, another person wants to do that. And then we end up with a cobbled together road that we just paid thousands of dollars to fix.
Like Memorial Drive in Winthrop.
Yes.
Right. I mean, I get that, but I can see that there could be emergency situations with a septic system or a gas line or something that.
Absolutely emergencies arise and that's maybe in that section. And I'm, something was telling me the road commissioner has the authority to waive, for instance, a line of sight in here. There's one where it specifically says the road commissioner, the applicants should meet these criteria, but if they can't, road commissioner can do such and so and whatever, make it the best that can be done.
It's in item three, under application requirements and procedures.
Yeah.
At, item three says, application review. The road commissioner or designee shall review the application for compliance with this ordinance and shall issue a decision on the application within 72 hours. The road commissioner or designatee may attach special conditions to the permit if deeded, if deeded necessary, maybe deemed necessary, to ensure compliance with this ordinance or to maintain public safety.
But then in the next one.
The next one.
Item four says, outside of emergency repair, as determined by the road commissioner or designatee, road opening permits shall not be issued for public ways paved within the past two years. But it specifically says outside of emergency.
Yeah, so, so.
So it seems like it addresses your.
Okay.
Your, your concern there, right?
Yeah, I think, I think three takes care of it and four makes sure that it's okay.
I just know that there's a difference between will and shall.
Yeah. Legal background. Anything else that you guys have? Go ahead, Carol.
Sorry, three things.
No, do.
First of all, I am very pleased that the quadrupling fees that were going to be charged for parking have been taken out. That was my opposition upfront. Number two, on page two, starting on page two, the no parking areas seem, it hurts my brain to read those. I'd almost have to be standing at Refill Corners and saying, okay, you're standing here and going in that direction 70 feet and in this direction 50 feet and in this direction 200 feet and over there 90 feet. Is there not some standard from a crossway that we're going to prohibit parking? It's like, depending on what direction you're headed, it's a different distance. Very complex.
When we first dug into it, I had the same concern. And then I went out to that main street intersection and everyone is exactly the way it is right now.
Okay.
So it'd be no changes except in front of the post office. And that's where everybody parked for two seconds to go in and out and so on.
Yeah.
And quite frankly, and that, that will disappear as parking. So the curb will come out and they just won't be able to park there. That's going to require lots more turning movements in and out, both between the post office and the market and east of the post office. There'll be a lot more turning movements, which are inherently a little more dangerous. And personally, I'd like to, to see that remain the way it is, but I've heard lots of complaints, including my, my roommate. Who has told me she definitely would like to, to what's being offered here. So that's where it's, I'd sit in there.
I, I agree with Carol. It might be nice to, like, if it's possible to include that.
Yeah, we, we do have, we do have a map and that, we can definitely include a map and that, that was actually one of the things referenced.
A little side of the corner, something you'd go.
Yeah, it was.
And there used to be one before we combined all of these together.
Yes, and so we, we can recreate that. And I did actually reference a map in the appendices, but the appendices we pulled out because then they can be adjusted if necessary without having to adjust the entire ordinance. So we will, we will have a map with this that, that shows very clearly what the parking limitations are.
I can confirm one more thing. So we'll add you two more things.
Oh, hang on one second, Carol. It's on your last one.
This is also for safety for people pulling out of roads, correct? That's one of the reasons for having these sight lines?
That's correct.
Okay, because you have to come all the way up 41 from Winthrop, almost into the intersection to be able to see down towards the fire station.
Yeah.
And to me, this isn't far enough for, for vehicle safety. I understand there are parking issues for, for businesses, but to me, vehicle safety is number one. So, but I just wanted to clarify that that's why we're doing this, is for line, line of safety sight.
That's correct.
Line of sight, see.
Carol, go ahead.
One thing I wanted to confirm, so, and I know there was talk of it, at the library, the parking spots in front of the library are staying or going?
Staying. So, and, and actually everything on Route 17, other than what has been negotiated with the DOT is actually under state purview. We clarified that in one of the discussions with the road committee. The jurisdiction that we have doesn't extend beyond those parking spots that we've established with the permission of DOT. So that's why everything is pretty much staying the same, except for in front of the post office. But outside of that, people being able to park on Route 17, one side or both sides for a library event, that's going to be up to DOT to manage and those will stay there unless DOT says otherwise.
Okay, last thing, and we talked about this, is the culvert size to 12. You were saying it's kind of a cost thing, but then you were saying it was adequate to move stuff, but inadequate for little creatures or little kids to be crawling in it. And that was a very important point. However, later in our packet and agenda, we talk about culvert work on Church Road and the replaced culverts are 15 inch in that contract. So if we approve this, are we saying going forward, culverts can only be 12 inches? I did, I see a conflict of two things in this agenda.
Culverts come in many different sizes. Anything smaller than 12 inch and eight, I've seen them used occasionally, clog very easily. Anything just clogs them right up. 12 inch, they can get clogged as well, but more difficulty or they're only half clogged and they still function and then somebody cleans it out for the next big storm and so on. The 12 inch though is, is minimum. And so you have to size your culvert to carry the anticipated flow. If you go to a long run, a mile coming down a hill, even though it's at two or three or four percent, you may need a 15 or 24, you may need a 36 inch culvert.
But 12 is just the baseline, Doug? Is that what you're saying?
Well, the 12 is the smallest.
Thank you.
Right, right this minute, the ordinance says 15, it's the smallest. 15 has problems in that, yes, dogs and small kids can fit into those 15 inch culverts. And not only that, but it even lowers the depth of the ditch beside an additional three inches, which has problems with multipliers in the four to one setbacks. And the other thing it does is it reduces the depth of cover over the pipe and allows a lot more cold air. 15 inch pipe is about 40% bigger than a 12 inch pipe. And so you get cold air in there that freezes the ground below the culvert and above the culvert, jacks the culverts up. And that's why you see so many paved driveways with little humps right over the culverts because the frost is jacking them up.
Yeah, I wish Ben was still here because he could just swear on a Bible about how many.
Yeah.
Culverts we have because they're oversized.
Yeah, so that's why, going back to 12. Instead of 12s used to be standards across the state, but a number of years ago, the, as so often happens, that the creep comes along, they make it bigger. It's like the guy went to buy shoes and he says, I wear size nines, but 10s felt so good, I bought 11s, right? And that's what, that's what has happened is the culvert ordinance over the years and many times.
But 12 is our minimum.
Excellent, yeah. 12 is the minimum, you can do anything there.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, absolutely. Anything else for the parking?
I would make a motion to approve.
Excuse me one second.
Yep.
I, I have an amendment myself and I didn't want you to make a motion, leave it out. But if you look at section 12. Well.
H16.
F1. Okay. 12 F1, these are the penalty sections that Carol was referring to a minute ago.
Yeah.
And it says first offense, second offense, but we haven't put a timeline in here. And so how do you keep track? First offense. so how do you keep track? First offense is that per year? Is it per calendar year? Or starting the first offense, give you 12 months where you get the second one? Is it a lifetime number? Or should it be every two years or three years? We need to put some length of time.
I would say so. It looks like a lifetime in here, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Permanent file.
Yep, permanent file.
I'm ready to make.
It looks like a lifetime thing in here, the way it's written.
It could be lifetime, which I bet is a thing is a bit severe.
Well, I'm ready to make a motion, so I'd like us to put a timeline on this so that we can do this.
There you go.
Okay. I think a 12-month period from, I mean, because if we have a violation, we're going to have a record. And just to be clear with violations, we do not want to be doing this. The only tool I ever want to use in this ordinance is towing, and only when it's absolutely necessary for public safety, such as when we have snow removal, it can't happen. So the intent here isn't to exercise police powers. It's just to give people a little bit of hesitation, or a, you know, really, just don't park your car here anymore. It'll make it easier for everybody if you don't, just.
Since the town operates on a fiscal year, can we just say a fiscal year? Or is it better for a resident to have a calendar year? Because it's more known to the general public, January through December.
I would think calendar year.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would think 12 months, I mean, just 12 months from the first time they get a citation.
Yeah.
Because that way, it's not just arbitrarily, some people get three months of grace period, some people get 11 months of grace period. I really think it's best to just do a 12-month from first citation because we'll have a record.
Absolutely agreed. What else?
So on F, where it says, "As well as monetary penalties per 12-month period from the first offense?"
Perfect. Yeah.
Yep.
Did you get that, Angelica?
H16 F.
If not, she has the video.
Yeah.
Okay, now, I would like to make a motion to, I make a motion to extend the meeting that we've just conceded by 30 minutes.
It's been moved and seconded for a 30-minute extension. All in favor, raise your hand.
I would make a motion to accept the public ways, traffic, and parking ordinance as amended for section F.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the public ways, traffic, and parking ordinance as amended, and we just discussed. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much for that.
I have a question.
Go.
Where this is an ordinance, does it have to pass town meeting votes?
This is actually one of those special ordinance that requires select board, the select board can exercise independently. I will say that when we do consider this again, we will want to give notice similar to what we give for town meeting in order to comply with state statute.
Gotcha.
So it'll be like a, you know, this has been certified and posted by a resident of the town, the same type of thing you would see for a warrant for a town meeting.
Excellent. We move to item 23012, "Consider a new date and time for the select board retreat." Let's figure this out right now, friends. Today is Monday, August 29. We have.
When is our meeting in September again?
Our meeting in September is the 19th, September the 19th, Monday.
And so what's the Monday after that?
So we could do the 26th, which is September 26th, Monday, September 26th, at 5:00.
And we're not meeting in October until later in the month?
We don't meet until, in October, until the 17th, and that is the chairs, the committee chairs and select board meeting.
So only have one meeting in September?
We only have one meeting in September the 19th. That is correct. So do we want to try to shoot for the 26th of our, for our retreat? Monday, the 26th? Going once? Going twice?
5:00?
Monday, the 26th at 5:00.
To 9:00.
I don't think I can do 5:00.
Okay.
I can usually make things by 5:30.
All right, let's do 5:30. Actually, the agenda here said 5:30 to 9:00, so let's just do.
We mentioned that last time, yes, so. 5:30 to midnight.
5:30 to what?
9:00.
Oh.
Could I suggest that when we do the agenda, that we make it a working dinner break?
Yes, yeah, we don't want to stay any.
Because then we can maybe leave sooner.
Yeah, and then we'll get some din-din together, and we'll have that. And that will be what we advertise as well and let other folks know. So again, our next, the select board retreat is scheduled for October 26th, but our next select board meeting is October 19.
No, September.
September 19. God bless me.
You said it was Gustav, the leaves, Jim.
I know, right? Oh, okay, great. Yeah, I know. It doesn't matter what you say, as long as it's Gustav. We're moving to new business. Item 22017 is, "Consider taking any action as a result of the executive session discussion." We have five minutes set aside for this.
Yep.
Okay, Steve?
So on advice of our legal counsel, the petition that was submitted to us violates, does not meet the requirements of Title 30-A, Section 2522, in that it must, the petition should present an article in the form necessary to be voted on, and it didn't. So I move that we do not accept that petition.
Second.
It moved and seconded to refuse acceptance of the petition. All in favor? All opposed? Thank you very much. And we're moving right along. Item 23019 is, "Consider a meeting with Matrix Design Group to discuss infill broadband service options to Reedfield." Five minutes for this. Let's hit it.
I'll do less than that. We got a cold call from, from Matrix asking to, or this was an email, to talk about broadband and particularly infill services. And so I called the gentleman that reached out, his name was Chris Lynch. We'd met him in our interactions previously when we were investigating broadband, and he said that he was very interested in talking with the select board and very interested in providing basically a similar solution to what Fayette and Mount Vernon are looking at, which is a network that's built only to our underserved areas or unserved areas initially, and those folks along the way to get there, but at no cost to the town. So it would be something that we, that they'd be willing to do at no cost. But there's always a catch, and the town of Fayette and Mount Vernon will play largely into, I think, whether that's a possibility or not. But we do have still people in town who don't have internet service provided by Spectrum because they can't make enough money on it. It's not that they can't make money, they just can't make enough. So they put their dollars in other places and leave our residents stranded. Matrix is willing to help correct that problem that the Spectrum's left us with.
At a cost to the property owner?
No.
No.
To the company.
You're going to swallow that?
Yep.
Well, but then they're going to have, yes, but then they would have customers subscribing.
Right.
So they make their money back. So just a little tiny bit of fill-in, and this really will be short, like under a minute.
Where's my watch?
Matrix has made a proposal, Fayette voted down both of their proposals for Red Zone and for the municipal Axiom Network. And Matrix has come forward and offered to build the town of Fayette a broadband network. And so it would be like, like, we have Spectrum in Reedfield, and we didn't pay for that because the company came in and provided it. That's what Matrix is offering to do for Fayette. So believe it or not, I think the Fayette Select Board is still trying to decide if they want to do that. So that may or may not actually come to fruition. But if it does, that's why Matrix would be willing to do something on properties that are adjacent. And Mount Vernon has decided to go with the Matrix proposal because we each received a proposal from Axiom and from Matrix. And they're having a town vote sometime early this fall. And so if they move forward with that, then that would be two towns adjacent to Reedfield, and that's where this is coming from.
Great. I'd be curious, you know, what the broadband committee's thoughts on this is, and what sort of other legal situations, polling, you know, just.
We don't have a broadband committee anymore. Disbanded.
They go.
I would like more information. I think when we talk about this in terms of, you know, there's, they've got to touch somebody's polls, right, to get to wherever they're going. So how does that all work out? And what does that look like in terms of?
I think that's what he could present for us.
I think the idea was to bring this forward, that is there enough interest here for the select board to spend 15, 20 minutes, half an hour?
Yeah.
Maybe as part of a workshop or something, intermission at a select board meeting, to meet and hear from, from, from Matrix, either in executive session or an open session. I know they're willing to do either. But if there's interest, I can reach out to Chris and let him know that we have a meeting coming up on the 19th, or sometime in October, and see if that's a possibility for them. I mean, I think we still have a mission that we want to provide coverage to everybody. And that was the goal, although the other option we worked on didn't pass, but we still have people without it. We should still be looking to fill that. That's my thought.
Well, and something else we can ask them about, and I would like, if we're going to do this, I'd like Eric to tell them upfront that we'd like to do that. If they're going to run lines from Reedfield, say, from Augusta through Reedfield to Fayette, and they're going to be passing down roads in Reedfield to offer it to people from that line, not necessarily setting up a whole town network. But when they're having passing lines, would they be willing to consider that? I think if they had enough subscriber interest, they would say yes, and if they didn't, no. But it would be nice to know if that's something that they would consider as part of their proposal.
Yeah, I'd listen to that.
Oh, I'd definitely.
Especially if there's people who don't have, I mean, it's unconscionable to me, especially now that that exists, but I guess it does. So, yeah, I'd love that.
I kind of think it's a great solution because it doesn't cost us anything. It costs a subscriber something. And I mean, my personal opinion, it will cost a subscriber more than it would have with the other system. But if we can do this, it's not something we even have to ask the townspeople about really, because we didn't do that with Spectrum.
Yeah.
I mean, it was a company coming in and building us a new network, and so people could choose to participate or not.
We're simply addressing a lack of service with a vendor that would like to make that different. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. That's excellent. And Eric, I would say get in touch with them and see if they can come.
I'll do that.
Excellent. Well, we're moving right along. We have in our packet, item 23020, which is, "Consider the award of road striping services." Eric, who's striping our roads for us?
Well, if we're following the math, it will be Steve Lucas and, and his company, who has done it for us for the past, like, seven to 10 years, probably, done a fantastic job, pays taxes here in Reedfield, and is just an all-around good guy and does great work for us. So my recommendation, based on both the financials and my experience working with Lucas striping, is that the select board work with them to provide this service.
Absolutely.
And I would note that the other bid received from K5 Corporation was for half again as much.
Steve's good to us.
Quite a bit more costly.
Yeah.
I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
You didn't say who.
I don't know.
I'll make a motion to approve Lucas striping as the striping contract, for the striping contract.
It's been moved and seconded. It's been thirded and fourthed as well to accept the bid of Lucas striping for striping services in Reedfield. If there, is there any other discussion? All in favor? Thank you, everyone.
I know where you're coming from, because Eric said we should go with Lucas.
Consider, item 23021 is to consider the award of paving and road maintenance services for Church Road. I just want to clarify, keep your, keeping score at home, this is paving and maintenance. This has nothing to do with the sidewalk. 23021.
Absolutely true.
We move here. Eric, I'm sure you have someone who should do this for us.
Well, it's a bit of a question, but I think that, I think that we should proceed. But for the first time that we've done this, we put out an RFP that was all-inclusive, included everything that needed to be done on the road, the culvert replacement, the ditching, the tree vegetation, and brush management, all of it together in one spot. And that's, that's, has its benefits, but it also has potential drawbacks. We, we did receive two bids for, for this. Littlefield Construction, Littlefield, where is it? Littlefield Paving and Plowing LLC gave us a price for everything. I've never worked with them, but they do seem to have an outfit that can do the work for us. And their pricing was, was, I guess, competitive, but higher than what we received from Pike Industries, who is a statewide and regional leader in providing these services. They're always very competitive. And in this case, they did come in lower for per-unit prices for the work and for the some work. But, but not so much that I thought that they were lowballing, or that the other guy was, was high by an unreasonable amount. Pike just has a lot of capacity. The issue that I'm seeing is that these, these tally to some pretty big numbers. And if we were to accept the Pike proposal, which is the most cost-effective, we would be looking at a combined price, not including the, the tree cutting services, which is probably between $10,000 and $15,000, of $348,606. What I saw for a total from Littlefield was 387,610. So they're, they're actually not that far off. Pike is a known quantity, and again, it had the lower pricing. But we have $370,000 plus or minus, you know, a few thousand total in our paving reserve at the moment. This would limit us from doing some of the other projects that we would like to pursue, perhaps including the work at Reedfield Corner, the work at P Ridge and Nickerson Hill. And those two projects would probably exceed what we would have left in this account. We only have $370,000. We're looking at spending about 350. And some of this can come out of the maintenance line, but this, this work, I think, is incredibly important. Church Road needs it. It's starting to delaminate. But it puts us in a position where we would have to maybe wait a year until we can replenish that pot, because the price of asphalt, like everything else related to petroleum, has effectively gone up 80, 100% over the last year. So that's where we're at.
So this is probably a new select board person question for you, a multi-pronged question. I'll try anyway. So how is the, the extent of the work that needs to be done? You referred to the Nickerson Hill Road and P Ridge. I mean, are those roads in as bad a shape, or are those, are those as critical an issue?
They're not. Those are specialty projects. One is correcting Nickerson Hill and P Ridge. We have our road on someone's property without an easement, because over the last, over the last 100 years, people kept taking the corner a little bit sharper, and a little bit sharper. And now it looks like the Bank of the 8500, and it's 20 feet onto someone's lawn. But it's, it's kind of been there for a long time, but we also want to correct that. It's not a crisis. But we also have the issue up at the post office, where there's a bit of a safety issue there. But some people like it the way it is. Some people really want to see the sight distance improved. The DOT, I think, would probably like to see it improved, but they're fine with the work as long as we pay for it. So those aren't crisis issues.
Right. So Eric, the question is then, do we want to, do we want to blow out the budget with this necessary Church Road work, effectively pushing out the other work? Is that what we're saying?
Yeah, I would think it would leave us with like 10 or, or 10 to 30,000 for those other projects, and that's not enough. Not even enough.
But, but, but otherwise, we're, otherwise, we're watching Church Road to set it right.
Yeah, and Doug, if you want to comment on this, I'd appreciate your perspective. You, you know the area, so.
Yeah.
We didn't even have the P Ridge-Nickerson Road in the budget for this year, correct?
No, we had it in years past. Or no, that, that one we didn't. We had the church, the, the post office in, but in the budget in years past, but haven't been able to actualize it.
Does there anything to add about our Church Road versus the other items?
I don't think I'd add anything, but I might clarify a little bit. The portion of Church Road, starting at the blinking lights in our town, headed north, for quite a ways, is not in terribly bad shape. But when you get up near the cemetery, you But when you get up near the cemetery, you can see yourself, it's called alligator. And it looks just like alligator skin because the pavement's all broken with little cracks. And if we don't do something to stabilize that or indeed completely fix it, then those cracks are going to spread. We're going to be losing more and increasing our costs.
So is that the extent of the work or does it start at the corner to repay?
It starts, we're doing the full length in part because we have issues that, that we know are, are starting to show up. And, and Doug makes a great point about maintenance paving. By doing this work now, if we waited, you know, another, just at that patch and then waited five or 10 years, we would be spending more to repair that damage than, than doing it now. Yeah, Carol.
So. But i- if the budget issue is a big issue, it really ought, it should be. You could, in a piecemeal sort of way, do the portion up by the cemetery. Just scrape it all off, regurgitate it, mix a little hot top in and spread it back out again. There are lots of marvelous amounts of equipment around these days. And that would stabilize to prevent it from getting any worse or even spreading too much. And then in a couple of years, you could re-overlay the whole thing. That's not going to be without an additional premium. Have the contractor move in and move out. You can double those costs and so on. So there are inefficiencies doing it that way. But if you feel that we're really hard up against the dollar number, that would be one thing you could do.
Thank you.
That's exactly my point. So if we're doing anything on Church Road, does it not make sense to do it kind of all at once and maybe patch what's really bad? But if we're doing sidewalks and paving and all that, it seems weird to pave it and then have a bunch of sidewalk work on the new pavement.
Well, so the sidewalk work is going to be over three years and it actually shouldn't affect, they might have to cut into the asphalt maybe a foot or two. I mean, it's, it's not a real significant impact and it's only a quarter mile of a two mile road.
Big trucks on new asphalt.
Oh, of course you are. Yeah, yeah. But it's got a, it's got a good base and under most of it. And actually, one thing that, that I noticed is that the, the amount of shim, which is the, the first layer they put down to level out the road, it's approaching 50% of, of the actual overlay. So what they're saying there is, is, and you can see it going down the road, there's going to be a lot of fill going in to kind of straighten that road out before they put on that second. And that's going to help with, you know, protecting and making, you know, an inch and a half or two inch depth. Will we have that alligator cracking?
I think it's wise to, I mean, it sounds like to me that this should happen, do it now, like you said, do, do it now, do the whole way. Way, you know, we, we, there's so many unknowns about the sidewalk still. But I also think that, that, you know, we can, we still, you know, will need some planning before we can commit to the P Ridge Road. The RFPs are just now going out. So I, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to, to wait a year to do Church Road right. So I, I, I think the Pike bid is the one that, that I'm going to support.
But is Doug saying that there's really only certain parts that need attention short term and everything else can?
I think what Doug's saying, I don't want to put words in his mouth, is that, is that there's value in doing it all at once. If we are up against a really hard budget and we're willing to compromise and pay a little bit extra, we can defer some of that work, but we're not there. We have, we have around, like I said, 370,000 in the paving reserve. This is going to cost around 350. So we have the room. It's just, we're just going to have to be mindful of those tonnages and I think it would be wise to do it all at once.
I think what they're shooting at there, Carol, at least if I understand this correctly, is that anytime you move all that equipment in and out again, that costs a different amount of money also. And so there, long term, we would save, you know, have some extra money, maybe do these other projects if we did only the very worst of it now. But in the long run, it's going to wind up costing us more in total because we're moving that equipment in and out twice instead of just once.
But it doesn't seem to make sense to me to have a huge project, maybe three years down the line, that then might affect the new paving when we can just do the things that need attention now and then do a really good job once everything's done. To do two different projects on the same road and the finishing touch on the road level after or before you do like sidewalk and big trucks doing that, I don't know. It seems to be kind of weird timing that you would do such a big finishing project before you do a major upheaval.
That, the kind of schedule would want to be disclosed very early on to the engineering firm that's going to be working on the sidewalk. My thought is the sidewalk in most places would not be tangent to the Church Road. And some places it probably will be. My tangent, we're talking about the road, a curb and a sidewalk, no green strip in between. And so I think there'll be a green strip in between for much of it, but probably not all. And yet all of that needs to be worked as part of the design for the sidewalk project.
I'm sure that.
As I recall, when we did the sidewalk on 17, we didn't really destroy Route 17.
No, I mean, it, it's, it's a marginal impact. I mean, marginal in both sense, physically and literally, or figuratively and literally. It doesn't really encroach into the roadway that much. You might lose like I said, a foot or so. But I think part of this too is we don't know if we're going to do a sidewalk. I mean, best part of the reason we're, we're doing this design and planning work and having these public meetings, there might be an outcry or some major construction issues that can't be overcome. So I wouldn't want to put off necessary repair work on, on something that's probably three years out and still not 100%. And that might have a minimal impact on, on, on the, on the actual work that's being done this year. And I, I hope we can get this work done this fall. If, if, if it can be, it will be, but if not, it'll be done in the spring. But yeah, I think it's the right thing to do the work now and the right thing to go with Pike.
I agree. As a, as a resident that drives the Church Road often, it is definitely, especially the spots Doug mentioned, it's fallen.
So my question is, the, you asked for a inclusive bid and Pike did not give one because they did not include the brush and tree removal, which the other company put at approximately 9,600. So we would still do that work and that would come out of our maintenance budget? Is that what you're saying? Or we would have another contractor do it?
We could, we could, we would do it out of, out of the maintenance budget. And honestly, I mean, some of this, for example, the ground, the, some of the ditching and culvert work, we do have funds in our maintenance budget to handle some of that. So this isn't quite as bad as it looks, but that, that tree work on Church Road is probably going to be, like I said, 10 to $15,000. And I, I want to see that worked on.
Even though they only estimated it at 9,600?
I think that the reason it was lower is because they were going to be on site doing the work anyway. And so it's one of those value things.
Well, I would want to make sure that it's included because that's one of the things we had talked about in the last couple of years.
It's not included in Pike. Pike, Pike didn't bid on it. It's not included. We're going to have to pay extra for that. That's why I'm saying.
But we would still do it.
We absolutely, I, I wouldn't do anything on that road without doing that because we have to do it. Yeah. We absolutely have to.
I would make a motion to accept the bid from Pike Industries for the Church Road project as presented and include funds for the brush and tree work.
Second, it's been moved in second to accept the Pike Industries Church Road paving bid as presented in the packet. Is there any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
So we're doing $300,000 on paving Church Road. Is that the figure we're talking about?
352, 598, 25.
What would be the cost difference between doing a little bit now and bringing the, bringing the equipment back seems to me to not be a huge bulk of it.
It's, I, I've never paved the road, so I don't know what it is, but I want to do it right the first time.
Yeah, so without, without getting a separate quote or a separate price to do that, we don't, we don't know for certain. We just know that as a matter of course, in the professional world of, of, of bidding on paving projects and working with those contractors and Doug's experience as an engineer, it, it does cost more. We just don't know. We can't say how much.
Any other discussion? So the motion is to approve this Pike bid in addition to funds for the tree removal. All in favor? Excellent. All opposed? Thank you so much. That is our last item. Thank you very much to everyone who was here and we appreciate it. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
And second, it's all in favor?
Is it really the last one?
Thank you very much. We are.
You mean, is that really the last one?
Yes.